I miss you all.
We know. No.
Look everybody. I do my work.
We know. We good? All right, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Orange Board of Education Pubert District School Board meeting, April the tenth, two thousand twenty-four. Mr. Ballot?
Good evening, Madam President. Good evening, Madam Vice President, Superintendent Dr. Fitu. We're gonna do a quick roll call vote. Mr. Armstrong. Ms. Crockett. Mr. Wingfield. Board Vice President Gravesandy.
I'm here.
And Board President Johnson.
I'm here.
Madam President, we have a call.
Thank you. Mr. Ballot, can I get a...
In conformance with the Board of Education Policy zero one six two and the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter two thirty-one, this is to announce that this open public board meeting of the Orange Board of Education is being convened with adequate notice. Notice that this meeting has been posted at the administrative office, filed with the City Clerk's Office of the City of Orange Township, and delivered to the Orange Transcript and the Star Ledger. The City of Orange Township Board of Education encourages the participation and input from members of the public at its board meetings. However, in accordance with board policy, verbal attacks against individual staff members or members of the board are not permitted. Persons are encouraged to address the board regarding comments relating to agenda items or issues concerning the educational process. Public comments are limited to one per attendee for a maximum duration of three minutes. Please be advised, this meeting is being recorded and live streamed via the internet. The Board of Education thanks you for your cooperation. Madam President, just want to also recognize that Board Member Tarver is here since we just did the roll call.
Thank you.
Please stand for the flag salute.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam President?
Yes, sir. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Motion, Armstrong.
Second, Gravesandy.
There's been a motion to go into executive session by Mr. Armstrong. It's been seconded by Vice President Gravesandy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? Hearing none, motion carried.
We recess until six forty-five, but no later than seven thirty. Thank you.
We didn't, you didn't.
It's there.
Is, is Edwan here?
Actually, it's not there.
No, we don't have to. We can, we can wait till next week, huh? Okay. We ready?
Yeah.
Good evening. How are you? Hi, Tito. How are you?
I'm good.
We missed you.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Good evening, thank you for coming to the Orange Board of Education Public School District Meeting, April 24th. Can I get a motion to go into open?
Hello. There's been a motion by Mr. Armstrong and seconded by Ms. Crockett to go back into open session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? Hearing none, motion carried.
We will now hear from our student representative, Mr. Tito.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm thrilled today to stand before you to share the findings of a survey that I conducted regarding our school lunches. As many of you may know, the quality and variety of food provided in our school cafeteria plays a crucial role in our daily lives. It impacts our health, our focus in class, and even our overall satisfaction, satisfaction with the school environment. Recognizing the importance of this matter, I embarked on a mission to gather direct feedback from our student body. Through a meticulously crafted survey distributed with the help of QR codes strategically placed around our campus, I received an overwhelming response from over three hundred of our peers. This diverse pool of feedback provides a comprehensive glimpse into the collective sentiment regarding our school lunches. Today, I invite you all to join me in exploring the insights from this survey. And from preferences to critiques, each response represents a voice yearning to be heard, a perspective longing to be understood. As we delve into the slideshow presentation, I urge you to keep an open mind and consider the implications of these findings. After all, it is through understanding and collaboration that we can strive towards improvements that benefit us all. So, next, I'll be presenting this slideshow. If I connect it.
They would have to.
Do I bring my Chromebook?
What?
Do I bring my computer up or?
Where's Mr. Curtis? Gray Sandy. Be there. Refresh. Gray Sandy. Refresh. You got it, bud. Mm-hmm. Gray's mine. I think.
Uh-oh.
No. Are we still gonna put it on that channel default?
The minutes.
Yeah, are you gonna put it on the channel default? Then nobody read it. I don't know how sorry we're gonna do. To rewind. That's fine. Both.
Both? Yeah.
Oh. While we're reading, the board would like to recognize Mr. Jeff Winfield. Happy birthday.
Oh, my God.
Happy birthday to you.
No cake. It's a birthday. I would say let them eat cake, but there is no. You're so wise.
Okay.
So, for my school, I've got together a comprehensive school lunch survey.
Can we get him a mic?
Please.
Hello? Okay. Okay. Hello?
Hi.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, for my school, I decided to put together a comprehensive lunch survey. And one thing going into being student representative, I wanted to make sure that I highlighted the voices of all the students and have a direct, and this was one of the things that allowed me to kind of show you all a direct representation of, you know, what they thought about the school lunch. So, with the first slide, like I mentioned in my speech, the number of responses that I got was three hundred and six. So, what I did was I went online and while I was thinking about it, I put together a QR code through a website on Adobe and to show basically a poll that I created on Google Forms with the help, one of my friends is actually out here, Brianna. She helped me, you know, with putting this together. So, when we did this, we had a series of questions. And one of the first questions on the Google Form was, how often do you eat the lunch? As you can see, for every day, students fill forty point eight percent, for most days, forty two point two percent, and never seventeen percent. For the next question, we asked, do you like the lunch at Orange High School slash OPA? So, eighty-five percent said no, and fifteen percent said yes to this question. For the third question, I wanted to make sure to give students a wide option, options of things that they could choose on this Google Form, so it wasn't as limited. And I basically broke it down into different categories so that they can choose. And the question was, what do you not like about the lunch? The one is, the food is not fresh, there's a lack of options, not sanitary, presentation of the food, and the food doesn't taste good. For the first one, we had one hundred sixty-three responses, people chose that, two hundred and one, one forty-three, one eighty, and two oh seven. This is a couple of different responses that I left on the open-ended section that students were able to put their comments in about the school lunch. And, you know, me creating this survey is not to bash the school, but in order to make things better. And I want students in the future, you know, even as I leave the school, I want students to be able to have a clear voice and be able to choose certain things because, like I said in the beginning, the students are the ones that go there Monday through Friday, experience all the things. So, I think it's important to keep doing surveys such as this. And, yeah, that's my slideshow. Thank you. Yes.
Yes, please.
Yes, for sure.
Just send it to us in our board email, okay?
Okay, no problem.
Oh, thanks.
Yeah.
Tito, did they have any recommendations or requests for what they would like to see that was different?
So, what I wanted to do in the beginning while making the lunch survey, at first, I kind of wanted to give, like, a base for them to choose. And then after I presented the, you know, after I presented the information that I found, I wanted to kind of dive deeper because going into it at first, I was like, you know, how many students are really gonna wanna fill out a survey and sit down and do all that? So, when it came to that, I was thinking about doing kind of like base level stuff. And then after I presented, kind of going deeper to hear because I think when you hear, you know, specific concerns that students have and it's not general, you're able to do more, so.
So, I challenge you to dig deeper.
Okay. Okay. I will.
Thank you. The next voice we will hear will be our superintendent, Dr. Fitzier.
His presentation will be even shorter.
You can borrow my mic. All I need is my mic.
Thank you, Nas. Good evening, everyone. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, we're gonna begin with a scholarship update that was given to me on April eighth by Mrs. Ware, our supervisor of guidance. Are you ready? As of April eighth, twenty twenty-four, we have a total of seventeen million, four hundred ninety-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars in scholarships between OHS and STEM Academy of the Oranges. I want you to take a look at Orange High School's number at eleven million, one hundred sixty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Last month, if you can, not last month, but in February, we had our last meeting, twelve thousand, twelve million, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars. So, we're on the move. Big applause for our students and staff at Orange High School. STEM Academy of the Oranges, their number is now at six million, three hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars, up from four million, three hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. So, I just wanted to give the community a quick looksee of where we are with academic scholarships. As we do every month, we shout out our students of the month. So, here at Orange, the administrative building, I almost said Orange Administrative Academy of Angry Innovation, as well as at home, let's get loud and proud for our scholars. Central Elementary School, Sherilyn Pekar. Cleveland Street School, Malachi Canyon. Forest Street Community School, Mofula Falua Ogodadi. Haywood Avenue School, Jorge Lima. Lincoln Avenue School, Luz Lorenzo. Oakwood Avenue School, Kimora Lee Jones.
Oakwood.
Orange High School, Alan Mesrian. Orange Preparatory Academy, Melachi Allen. Park Avenue School, Orans Shannon. Rosa Parks Community School, William Tenor. STEM Innovation Academy of the Oranges, Michelle Navarro. Twilight Program, Paul Miller. One last final applause at home and here at the administrative building. We round applause for our March Students of the Month. As we continue the presentation, we look at the attendance for March of twenty twenty-four. Low chronic absences, zero to five point nine nine days. Modest, six to eight point nine nine days. Significant chronic absences, nine to twelve point nine nine days. And high chronic absences, thirteen or more days. So, as we do every month, we take a looksee at where the chunks are. And we see that our chunks are at the low chronic and the modest chronic areas, right? And so, the next slide allows you to see by grade configuration, and this one is the early childhood department. All righty, so you get to see where those kids are coming to school, wanna continue every day. All ready? And again, it's not the button, it's intimated, though we have pre-K three and four education begins at our lowest level, our youngest level, and we need them in school every single day. Kindergarten through grade seven. Again, we see our biggest catchments at the low chronic and the modest chronic areas. All ready? So, again, if you do not have your subscription to the parent portal, make sure you sign up online because you because you get this information on a continuum every single day so you know where your child is. If there's a discrepancy, then you need to call your main office of your child's school. Grades eight through twelve. The secondary students are coming in, aren't they, folks? Right? And this next slide shows us a configuration of pre-K three through grade twelve and how the students are coming to school. So, every year, we get better in terms of students entering our doors. So, to our committees that are working diligently at our school buildings, thank you so very much for ensuring that this is taking place on a continuum. And here you can see our monthly attendance averages. And again, we're at ninety-five percent, ninety-six percent for the month of March. I'm looking forward to see where we are for the month of April. All righty? At this time, I'm gonna have our supervisor of guidance, Mrs. Felicia Williams Ware, come to the day, to the microphone. She's gonna go through a presentation on SCL and wellness. Mrs. Ware.
Thank you so much, Dr. Fitzhugh. Good evening, President Johnson, Vice President Grace Sandy, to board members and to our Orange community that has come out tonight, wanting to share some information that Dr. Fitzhugh has tasked me to share with you all. So, you see the points that we'll discuss this evening.
We're gonna change the microphone.
Where's my flipper going? So, you see the points we're going to discuss this evening. College and career exploration, social emotional learning, and our Second Step SCL program. And then, of course, we'll leave room for Q and A. My flipper. I can just go next. There we go, okay. I'm actually very delighted that he started with this first slide because this becomes the groundwork of what we want all of our school counselors to endeavor upon every day in their purpose and work with our young people. I'm gonna read them to you because there's only seven, it's really quick, and I'll just summarize a few of them. But I want you to really hear. Mindset one, every student can learn and every student can succeed, right? Mindset two, every student should have access to and an opportunity for a high-quality education. Three, every student should graduate from high school prepared for post-secondary options. Four, every student should have access to school counseling program. Five, effective school counseling is a collaborative process involving all stakeholders. School counselors are leaders in the school. And our last point, seven, school counseling programs promote and enhance student academic career and social emotional outcomes. So, if I could just share with you, I had one month shy of twenty-two years of service as a school counselor. And these are the mindsets that I walked with every day with every student that I engaged in. And I encourage every school counselor and social worker under my charge, excuse me, to have the same. And definitely providing the PDs and resources that will get them, get them where they need to be. Many of them are well-equipped. So, the mindsets become the purpose, the deliver- I'm flipping myself, flip back, thank you. Okay. Thank you. Three tiers of support become the platform of service on the how, the delivery of services like it's titled there. And as a, as a person in student support services, a lot of the work we do reflects the academic work. In math classrooms, ELA classrooms, they deliver the same RTI framework, tier one, tier two, tier three. That should be delivered for a student in their wellness capacity and their social emotional. So, I am a huge advocate of making sure that each school is supplied with the resources, whether in the school or outsourced, where we can provide. Tier one, that's our school counselors and our social workers, going into the classroom, delivering the messages and the mindsets that are needed for the students. Tier two is small group. So, again, just like in the math classroom, we teach the entire lesson. We have a group of, small group of students who need additional support. Those become the students that our school counselors and social workers work with more closely, right? And then, of course, tier three is that one-on-one, same thing. The way a teacher may have one-on-one tutoring, that's when we get into our counseling sessions because we really need to look at our delivery of services and making sure that we're supplying them on each tier. I think this is a graphic that everyone should be familiar with. This is our SCL, Castle SCL, which is a leading initiative across the country, New Jersey especially, and with Dr. Fitzhugh going good to great on social emotional wellness. We support this. As you see, the benefits of SCL in our classrooms and for our students is essentially, students provide, participating in SCL in school have a higher level of school functioning as reflected in their grades, test scores, attendance, and homework. So, the investment in the whole student creates an investment in the academic student. So, that's where our school counselors and our social workers provide those resources. And with that, I had a conversation with one of our building principals today. And there was a, the topic was essentially self-efficacy. Is that we wanna make sure that our staff are also pouring into our students, not only in the SCL, but in their one-on-one engagement, that they are providing the, the strength in contributing to how a student believes that they can achieve. So, along with SCL, that increases a student's self-efficacy. And it's just to mention, and I'm glad the graphic here is on this slide as well, it really breaks down who are the partners and stakeholders in this work of SCL. So, of course, we have classrooms, we have the larger school, but then we go out into the community where we all hold a responsibility as families and caregivers to our students and then the community at large. So, we all are participants in this process. On the screen, you'll see the five SCL components. And under each are the subcategories, excuse me, that each one support. So, just looking at the topics at large, self-awareness, social awareness, responsible decision-making, self-management, and relationship skills. Think of those as the leading vehicles that will increase a student's just view of the world and themselves. And all of that leads to a fixed, in disputing a fixed mindset to create a growth mindset. So, that graphic, I think, in itself, a locked mind doesn't grow very far, right? But our graphic on the, on the right with a leaf gives us the visual of growth. And just a few, just a few statements that just reflect what fixed and growth mindsets are. I think the very first one is my absolute favorite. Everyone is, well, the fixed mindset says, I'll never be as smart as that person. The growth says, everyone is talented in many ways. And that's what we need, I think, students to realize, right? And you can see the others in the graphic. I wanted to highlight three of our programs that have been incorporated in the Orange Public Schools. Of course, this is not limited, right? This is just the three that I think are the most comprehensive and will, will give us the most investment for the greater outcome. So, the first one is actually a statewide program. It was, it began with the Department of Children and Family Services. This school year, and certain districts were invited to participate, Orange being one of them. And we have happily joined that partnership. And their, their purpose is to create or provide, I'm sorry, the three tiers of mental health and wellness services to the students in the district. So, if you go back to that RTI model with the three tiers, they provide those services in our school buildings. So, just on the twenty-first, our school couns-, I'm sorry, March twenty-first, our school counselors and social workers sat for a PD with the NJ4S, excuse me, organization. And with that, they are able to log into a platform, decide which services they need for their student, which tier, whole school, small group, or individual. And the NJ4S staff, which is outsourced through Family Connections, which most of you probably are familiar with, they are a local organization with clinicians. It brings those clinicians in the school building to service while we have them. Because so many times, we find that students are referred out, but the family may have hiccups and, you know, all kinds of things that can hinder them. So, we wanna bring the services to where they are. The second is Second Step Program, that's an online platform where teachers and school counselors can provide SCL lessons. They have videos, small quizzes, different activities. So, we really wanna broaden that horizon going into the next few years. And then, our mental health first aid program is where we train a percentage of staff and students to be skilled to respond to signs of trauma in their peers. So, we have boots on the ground, students who then can, you know, connect with other students who may be experiencing difficulties, and then they'll alert and adult for processing. Just an example of the small group topics that NJ4S offers, and they also offer them in the leading languages of our district, including of Spanish and Creole. Just a few opportunities that I wanted to highlight with career exploration that the school counselors and support staff have participated in or have provided to our young people over the course of the year thus far in exploring career options. So, just like that mindset says, that they are prepared for post-secondary education. And this starts in, you know, the elementary schools, it doesn't start just in the high school. A list of professional development opportunities that myself and the trauma-informed team have participated in and as well as other school counselors and social workers. So, we're, we've sat for racial trauma webinars, restorative practice. I am attending the, I'm sorry, the New Jersey School Counselors Association Spring Conference, April nineteenth. And one of the exciting workshops that I want to participate in is the Building Bridges for our, for our L students and how counselors can support. And SCL Day was officially March ninth, I'm sorry, March eighth across the state of New Jersey. We did it in advance of that, during our technology hiccup that we had. We provided our staff across the district with different resources and activities that dove into SCL for all the schools across the district. And going back, so just highlighting, going back to the SCL components, to make it a very valuable and enriching experience, we assigned an SCL component to great, certain grade levels, very age-appropriate, I believe, so. So, for grades K through one, we focused on activities involving self-awareness. Two through four, social awareness. Grades five through seven, self-management, relationship skills, eighth grade. And the high school, responsible decision-making. And here's just a little information on Second Step, which I did speak on. Okay, all right. So, I hope you all found that as information was, was enriching to you all, knowing the services that we are aiming to provide to the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ware. Mrs. Ware, before you go, the board president has a question.
So, what do we do about SCL for pre-K three and pre-K four?
Yes, they're also included in all of the catchments that we provided.
So, what do they do as young learners?
So, it is different, you're absolutely right. At that age level, it's more about mindfulness, right? So, the activities may not be as rich, but the very low-level understanding of self-worth and things of that nature can still be, can still be, you know, given to them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ware. This is first of several conversations that we'll have at this forum to continue our thrust into the SCL wellness world. April is Autism Awareness Month. So, make sure that we have marked our calendars already. Autism Awareness Month is April. April second was the Sixteenth Annual World Autism Awareness Day, just so everybody is aware of that. But on April first, we made sure, even though we were not here, we wanted to make sure that we did push a blast out indicating that we were thinking about our children of autism. The United Nations officially declared April second World Autism Day in twenty-eight, twenty oh eight. And last, the entire month of April is promoted by many organizations as a month devoted to these affected by autism spectrum disorder. According to Autism Speaks, it's World Autism Month, not just a day, right? And I think that holistically, we do it every day. I think we can agree on that, right? Because we give love and value to all of our children who have autism. And it's not, it's not something that they should be ashamed of, it's something that we should be celebrating, right? So, again, the Autism Society of America calls April Autism Acceptance Month, right? And I think that's so important. So, April twenty-fifth, Mrs. Harper, is the district program. April twenty-fifth at Park Avenue? At Park Avenue. All righty, so more details are forthcoming. Ms. Harper, come on up to the day so that you can, we're having a one and two conversation, we've got to everybody. Come on over, Mrs. Harper.
Forest Avenue School will also be presenting a chat and chew with parents regarding autism. So, that date will be forthcoming. On the twenty-fifth, it will be a district dressed down and in observance of autism. So, we're doing a lot of things, and that's why I was able to give you these little things. So, it's, it's great to know that we are celebrating autism in a way because autism is actually being increased in New Jersey. You turn around, many more and more children are being diagnosed with autism. And we have to address the parents as well because my grandson is autistic, and it's difficult. It's difficult for the parents, it's difficult for the children. And it's just, it's a lifestyle that is something that changes your entire lifestyle. You love your children, but not everyone has that awareness or that empathy or kindness towards children on the spectrum. So, we have to bring more awareness to our society regarding this, this diversity. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Harper. Mr. Armstrong?
We need a mic.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
I just wanna say thank you, Mrs. Harper, and to the school district for everything we are doing as far as autism, and it's not just a month, it's every day. And hopefully, we're looking to get more after-school activity for our autistic kids. Because that's what we're laughing at somewhere, you know, to get that after-school where they can do certain things and maybe have a sensory location or something like that. But thank you so much for us moving forward.
And even in the Special Education Committee, I know that thought has come up. So, I'm glad that we do have that committee of members of the board as well. Ms. Henry?
Quick question. Will we be involving any of our local citizens in our chat and chew or any of the programs who can give more, I guess, day-to-day or life experience as far as raising children on the special needs spectrum is concerned? as far as raising children on the special needs spectrum is concerned?
We actually have someone from East Orange that's coming in, not from Orange, but will be discussing. It is the parent of Nadine's place. So she's going to come in and she's going to do some work. And she will be at both Park Avenue and Forest. But Forest is more of a intimate, it's going to be like a smaller community so that they can actually address many different things that, what the parent is feeling. Why, why should we be aware of autism and how it affects a family, how it affects the child? And so that we can, like I said before, have more empathy for these families because it is a challenging situation.
My apologies. I don't want to keep this to be, I don't want to want this to be an ongoing conversation. But not in this venue, but afterwards, if I can suggest some ongoing quote-unquote "local talent," may I? To go going forth for the event of April 25th. That'd be greatly appreciated, please and thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Thank you, Mrs. Harper. Just a few more district highlights, and then we're going to jump into some of the winter diagnostic data. The public budget here will take place on April 24th at 6:00 PM in this very room already. So please, if you have a few minutes, come on out and hear how the district is going to allocate money for next year's school budget. Last week was National Assistant Principals Week. So join us in thanking all of our fantastic assistant principals for all they do on a continuum every single day. So thank you to our assistant principals. We're celebrating them this week because we were out last week. But we didn't forget to blast it out because we wanted to make sure that the paraprofessionals, the school librarians, and the assistant principals all felt appreciated during their spring break. National School Librarians' Day took place April 4th, 2024. So thank you, folks, that are here at 451 Lincoln Avenue, giving a big round of applause for our national, I'm sorry, for our school librarians. So that's really awesome. And we thank them for all they do on a continuum every single day. National Paraprofessional Appreciation Day, April 3rd, 2024. They work alongside our teachers. They work alongside our students. And they are always the unsung hero. So I just want to thank our paraprofessionals who work in tandem every single day to ensure that their teachers are good, that the CTE is good, and that the kids are good. So big round of applause to our paraprofessionals, both here this evening and those that are at home. The Week of the Young Child. Dr. Blanton, you want to do this one? You want me to do it? You sure? All right. So this is the Week of the Young Child for our early childhood students. They're going to partake in some great activities throughout the course of the week. And I know Week of the Young Child, it celebrates children's greatness and how they're progressing, not only pedagogically, but developmentally, right? And so this is going to be a great celebration throughout all of our elementary schools and early childhood centers because again, we want to make sure that our children understand that they are the pinnacle of why we do what we do every single day. So I do want to give our students a big round of applause because it is about them this week, the Week of the Young Child.
Week of the Child, just to make that clear. I had an amazing opportunity to read at Nortenine Dead Cat Center today, which is part of our network, network on our school district. And when I said these kids are phenomenal, funny, smart, and I read the Little Red Hand, I don't know if y'all ever heard of the Little Red Hand, but they were like, that's not right. Why nobody don't want to help? I'm talking about 40-year-old, 40-year-old. So I just wanted to bring back that we did represent by reading to children.
Thank you, Ms. Armstrong. This week has been in play for many years, and it's so exciting when you go in and you can see children having like crazy hair day or you see them talking about why they love pre-kindergarten, but they're looking forward to kindergarten, right? So those are the things that you hear and see. Dramatic play areas are robust during those times, blocks as well. And not just during the Week of the Young Child, but holistically, right? So you get the opportunity to see that during this section of the school year. The next is the kindergarten orientation dates. And we're going to push this out via social media on tomorrow. But again, this shows all of the orientation dates that we have for these particular schools. And these will be in-person, all righty? So you get to tour the kindergarten schools to our prospective pre-kindergarten families, right? You get a chance to talk with the principal, the assistant principal, the teachers, social worker, guidance counselor, phys ed teacher, right? You get a chance to see all these folks while you are walking and touring the school. And you also will learn a lot about the curriculum that we have implemented for kindergarten, whether it be in social studies or mathematics or ELA as examples. But you will also learn about the humanities block, which we're really excited about as it relates to the combination of English Language Arts and social studies and utilization of dramatic play to be part of that developmentally appropriate instructional model, ready? So these are the dates, and we'll push this out via the website and social media tomorrow. But we wanted you all to have them in advance. At this time, my colleague, Ms. Karen Harris, is going to come up. And she's going to discuss some of the results from the winter diagnostic. And then followed by Mrs. Scatari, who's going to talk about the math and science.
Thank you. Good evening or good night to the board and to the viewing staff, as well as the viewing community. What I'm about to share, I want to put in context. What you're going to see is some of the data points that we collect throughout the year. And then, most importantly, what do we do with that data, okay? So the data that you are going to see is data that reflects what took place in December. Very important to keep that in context. So it is from September to December. And you're seeing it so that you can get an inside view of what type of data we collect and then what do we do with it, okay? So in kindergarten, first grade and second grade, we are paying attention to reading readiness skills. And what you are seeing here is the composite. There are a variety of different sub-skills that we attend to, that we pay attention to, like first sound fluency and phoneme segmentation in kindergarten. These are skills that we know we need to monitor and build in order for students to be ready to read. So in the beginning of the school year, in September, you'll notice that we had 375 kindergarteners and that that number jumped to 381 in just a matter of those few months, okay? In first grade, you'll notice, and I really want to emphasize something here. The population of students, we are now in a, at a time where our student population isn't always as stagnant as we would think. So those are not the same exact 413 students that started our, started with us in September. There is a shift about 10%. And in some grade levels, it's more than that, of students who entered and came out. So what you are looking at are the aggregate numbers at the time that we took the assessment.
Ms. Harris?
Yeah, I was getting ready to ask you the same thing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The same exact question.
Sorry. Okay, so the, the, this particular assessment, blue is above benchmark, and benchmark is determined. This benchmark is a moving benchmark. I want to make that point clear as well. So there are specific indicators. For example, first sound fluency, the, in the beginning of the year, we would want students to recognize a set number of, connect a set number of sounds to words and be able to identify that. That number changes in December. So the number increases. So this is a progressive benchmark. So blue is above benchmark. Green is at benchmark. Yellow is approaching benchmark. And red is below benchmark, okay?
I have one question before you move. Can you go back to kindergarten?
Yes.
So in September, you had 129 in the blue. And in December, you had 65. Why the drop?
That's a, a great question. So I'm going to speak specifically to some of the things that we discovered as we were capturing this data. But I, I can speak to that now. That's, that's, that's a wonderful.
You can do it at your leisure.
Oh, no, no, no. That's a wonderful observation. So again, I mentioned that the benchmark is a progressive mark, and so it moves and shifts. One of the discoveries that we had with, specific to kindergarten, was that we noticed that some of our teachers struggled with the concept of blending that humanities block that Dr. Fitz you spoke about. So just to take you back, the humanities block increased the amount of time by incorporating social studies into the ELA block. We merged the two together. When we did that, we afforded students more time to be in dramatic play and to be with, in, in blocks. That was, that's, this is our first time doing that. And that space is a difficult space to navigate. It's important for students, young students, to speak, to hear each other speak, to have those opportunities to engage with vocabulary that they're, that they're experiencing. That's very important. So some of our teachers were kind of compromising that time trying to get other stuff in and not realizing just how important that is for students to talk to each other in that way and engage with each other in that way. And it actually is a readiness experience to be able to differentiate and distinguish sounds in words. Having those conversations are important. And so as we endeavored into this new space, there was, there was some negotiating of the time and the day. Because we capture data in this, data in this way, we were able to address that.
So are you saying in September 11th to the 29th, these kids was tested, and then in December 11th to December 22nd, those kids were tested? Or are you just saying that? So how did you get that data from the beginning of the year, from September 11th to the 29th?
Yeah, so the window is the 11th through the 29th. That's the window in which all of the schools had to assess students. And then the second window is December 11th through the 22nd.
Okay.
Okay, so it's this, it's the same cohort of students, plus or minus about 10% because of the shift in our, our demographic. And the, the teachers are the ones who are doing this assessment. This is our second year engaging in this assessment. We also learned that we, those students that are in the, that are in the red, we engaged in a progress monitoring experience. So when those students were identified in September, the teachers began a process of saying, every two weeks, well, I should say, the teachers began a process of saying, we're going to monitor their, these students as they, as we do instruction, we're going to monitor them on these specific readiness skills. What we noticed was in, from September to December, that monitoring took place once a month. What we learned is that monitoring has to take place every two weeks. It has to be done every two weeks. And so from December through to now, we have engaged with progress monitoring every two weeks. When we do this assessment, which schools are engaged with this, this week and next week, when we, when we see the results, we are anticipating that there will be a bigger shift because of what we learned from this, this interval, okay? So again, progress monitoring during this interval for the vast majority of students was once a month. We learned we need to move to two, every two weeks. And that's what we've been getting engaged with since December.
So almost half of the kindergarten, those numbers just don't look right to me because half of the population, like 129 of percent, 34% of the, the kindergarten students in September 11th to the 29th were fabulous. And then you get to December, the 20, 11th to the 22nd, half of the population dropped, like, that's a, that's a bit much.
It, it dropped, again, learning and understanding those shifts, those instructional shifts that we had to do. So just to kind of put, get back to that, to those highlights, we engaged, we are now engaged in early literacy meetings at every, at, at three of our locations. This data prompted us to review and go as deep as, during the early literacy meetings, there are myself, the supervisor for ELA K2, the coach for ELA K2, Dr. Blanton, who is over early learning, Ms. Harper, who is over special services, the principal of the location, the assistant principal, and one teacher. In those meetings, we go in-depth into lesson planning. We look at the, we look at this Acadiance data very carefully, the progress monitoring portion of this data. We speak to walkthroughs that we do throughout the course of the week. And we also look at observation data.
So, I'm sorry, because I'll probably keep, I'm, after this, I'm going to stop. So in September 11th to the 29th, from December 11th to the 22nd, what piece of that, like, what piece from that? That number is just really, really off. What was our kindergarten was doing or what were they not doing? What were they grasping or what were they not grasping? Because that is a major drunk, drop, and that is just in the beginning of the year.
You're, you're right, you're right.
That's a big jump from, for kindergarten? That's a, that's a big jump.
It is. One of the integral pieces for reading, and this is a, an ongoing learning experience for our teachers, right? And I, I'm hoping that everyone gets a chance to see the movie, The Right to Read, to come out and engage with that. There is a major shift that we are pushing with our teachers to help them understand the importance of decodable texts, the importance of phonics instruction, the importance of phonemic awareness instruction. What we noticed is that our students were engaged in phonological awareness instruction, sporadic phonics instruction, with few opportunities to practice with decodables. And so you're going to see, you're going to experience data that looks like this. What we've done is, in those early literacy meetings, we've reoriented teachers to ensure that the phonological awareness instruction marries and matches the phonics instruction. We made sure that we emphasized the difference between a decodable text and a read aloud. Read alouds expose students to language. Decodable texts give students opportunities to practice putting into place phonics instruction. With that, this data allowed us to see those are the areas that we need to focus our work and where we need to focus.
So if I'm looking at this, and if you didn't explain this to me, it would look like to me from September 11th to September 29th, maybe our kids wasn't tested the right way. Then we got accurate testing in January, December 11th to December 22nd because the number is off. It's like not sitting well. That just, that number is very, very off. So it appears to me, me looking at it, well, So it appears to me, me looking at it, well, maybe, I don't wanna say our teachers weren't doing their job, but I don't know. Because in, in September, it's a hundred and twenty-nine, and in December, it's sixty-five. That's half of our kindergarten population that isn't, that has just dropped from the beginning of the school year.
So again, as you're looking at this, the number, there is a drop. So there, there is a drop. The green also increased, right? So, so remember, it's a progressive benchmark, right?
So they were progressive in September and not progressive in December?
No, no, it, it's progressive period. So, so in other words, in September, and I, kudos, I'm gonna give a shout-out here to our district pre-cas because the majority of the blue students are in our district pre-cas. Okay, so the number for first sound fluency is ten in September. The number in December is like thirty-two. Okay, so the, the idea is that that marker moves. As we work with the teachers, this is our second year implementing this particular assessment. So as we work with teachers, the epiphanies that they've had in doing progress monitoring and recognizing where they need to focus their small group instruction is a result of capturing data like this.
Yeah, it's on.
It's on.
So I'm gonna say it was a combination of things. It's a combination of the benchmark itself, that, that marker moving. It's a combination of trying to incorporate that humanity, uh, excuse me, execute that humanities block and not recognizing the importance of dramatic play and blocks in that experience. And recognizing that when we are working on the progress monitoring implementation of this, the teachers, again, they're in that learning stage. So I would say there, those three large indicators are what contributed to that. Okay, and so again, using the data and recognizing this data, we've put different things in place. One being the literacy intervention meetings and having all of those individuals in the room to look at the day-to-day instruction that takes place and not just big picture, right? So we're looking, we dig deeply into lesson planning, the execution of lessons, the discussion of small group instruction, whose, what is the nature of that small group instruction? How are we, how are we targeting and moving students?
Question.
You're welcome. This, and this is second grade. Yes, I'm sorry.
You said blue was above average, correct?
I'm sorry, yes. Blue is a, it's not average, it's a blue, above the benchmark.
All right, so what I'm understanding is second year of a new program, or not, if not experimental program, which means that we're adjusting to this program just as well as the teachers and the students, correct?
Correct. Well, this is the second year of utilizing this assessment, yes.
And when we added this extra component, our above aver, our above-average students had human moments, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
As well as our teachers.
Right.
Right.
Not problem. I'm looking at the student number and, you know, as a former GNT student, I can tell you that, you know, just 'cause the subject matter is, you know, gifted and talented. Sometimes, you know, above-average students struggle too. Like, sometimes they run into that new subject, it's a wall. And whatever learning curve that they told you that was God-given, natural talent, or whatever you wanna call it, when you hit that wall, you become an average student. You become just as average as anybody else. So I understand it. And you said that the teachers were having, you know, epiphanies in the program and changing, you know, moving benchmarks such as, you know, from once a month to twice a month. I understand it. But I just wanna make sure that the blue is above average. And like I said, above-average students had average moments.
Thank you, Mr. Henry.
All right, not problem.
Mr. Tarver, I'm sorry, you, you want-
I just wanted to ask a question. I'm gonna turn my mic on, but I want him to lower the volume.
Okay.
Don't get that noise again.
Hello?
So I noticed, this is only a tool.
Yes.
I, I, I get that. So, you know, we, we have to let this play out. You know, everybody's adjusting to this.
Mm-hmm.
I'm glad that you said that, you know, you're adjusting the professional development of teachers, you know, around this, this new tool to assess our students. So that's great, I appreciate that. I would like to see the rest of the grades before we pour more questions onto you, you know? But in the end, I would like to know, and I'm sure you and Dr. Fitzhugh and the rest of the team will, but, you know, how much of a determination will be, as far as how much of this testing tool will be effective for, you know, in, in the end, for everyone, for the teachers and the students? You know, because this testing tool, you know, after your final assessment, may not work for our district. You know, I don't know if this testing tool replaced what was here previously, you know? I'm sure that's questions that you guys are gonna, you know, pose to yourselves all, all through the year and at the end of the year.
Yeah.
But right now, I'd kinda like to see the rest of the data before we pour more questions onto you.
Okay.
If the board members don't have any questions.
That's okay. Can, do we, want me to? Okay, all right. So this is our second grade. And what's important here is that the assessment itself changes. So the mid-year point is an oral reading fluency assessment. The September is a red, more of the readiness skills assessment, okay? So now we're on to third grade. And just again, to orient you to the, the data, this is, this growth measure assessment is a standards-based assessment. So it is really an end-of-year assessment, okay? So it's kind of a snapshot of where students are when they take the assessment, this end-of-year assessment throughout the year. What I would like to draw your attention to are the four different cohorts of students. You have, on the very end, the grand total, right? That, that's all of our students together. That's that data that typically always gets published out, right? What I've done is I've broken it, broken this down into the cohorts of students because that grand total really doesn't help us instructionally. So just to give you some insight, the general education students are closer to the cardinal line? Is that it? Looking at Mr. Scutary for that one. But you'll see that the general education students are there. And then our multilingual learners. And I wanna make a point here. Our multilingual learners are navigating grade-level text, learning a new language at the same time, okay? So this becomes an area that we have realized we need to take an added, additional steps. We need to do, take a viewpoint that is much more extensive because we have to, one, keep in mind they're learning the language. We also wanna make sure that we're not using that as this concept of excuse, but we're actually working to help support students where they, where they need to, okay? Then we have our students with identified needs. And, you know, in, in this cohort of students, we also need to recognize that sometimes their identified needs is being communicative impaired, right? There are things we need to attend to and places that, and in ways we need to support them. Again, they are being assessed on grade-level content. Oftentimes, to be identified as a student with a disability, you are two to three grade levels below, okay? So this is to take into account what took place in the fall, the same thing that you saw with the younger students. So you will see the top is the fall assessment. And then again, in December, this is the snapshot of how those students are, what, how things moved within those three months. Okay, so this is third grade. And fourth grade. Fourth grade, beginning of the year to, in comparison to the December assessment. This data really prompted us to make sure that our CPTs were very targeted. So our common planning times across the district with respect to grades three and grade four have really been anchored in foundation reading skills to fortify those skills as we transition to writing, a focus and an emphasis on writing. This is a reading assessment. I just wanna emphasize that part. Fifth grade. As you'll notice, there is, there are, there is movement here. And sixth grade. If I'm going too fast on any of these slides, it's, they're all in the same pattern. I just, I wanna make sure that you have an opportunity to see them. Seventh grade. And just another note for multilingual learners, this encompass, and captures all of the tiers that are present in our in-program. So tier one, those students that are, that are just entering, as this does not make a distinction between the different levels of multilingual learner. No, this one is not a progressive benchmark. This one is the benchmark for the end of the year. So it's gonna take into account, this is, this is the assessment for the end of the year. This doesn't move, okay? This is third grade. So from third grade through the, into the upper grade levels, it's still, you know, in September, how many of your students are at, would, are performing well with the third-grade standards, right? In December, how many of them are performing well with the third-grade standards? They're gonna be taking it next week. Again, how many of them are performing well with the third-grade standards? This is eighth grade. This is ninth grade. One of the key components that I mentioned to the subcommittee with respect to our ninth through twelve grade scores is this is their first year taking this assessment. This is the first time we're doing this assessment at this grade level. One of the key components is to remember, one, reading at this ninth-grade level. I'm gonna try and put this in perspective. This is a college, what, in years before the Common Core, many years before the Common Core, we would consider the reading that they're doing at this level to be college-level reading. When we instituted the Common Core, we shifted all of that. And so the reading at this level is above a thousand lexile, ten thou, ten, ten lexile. It is higher-level reading that students are being asked to read, comprehend, and analyze. Grade ten. And in grade eleven, it's, the numbers are gonna look a little differently because there were a cohort of multilingual learners that were not assessed in September, and we had an opportunity, they, they, that window elapsed. And so now their first real assessment is coming in, the second assessment. And with respect to grade twelve, these are not all of our grade twelve students. This does not include your AP classes or your Bard classes, the dual enrollment classes. These are general education students. So really quickly, just to kinda rehash a little bit, we noticed that the general, the distribution of general education students across all grade levels follows a normal bell curve with the majority of students falling in the on-level and approaching. Particularly in the seventh and eighth grade in our middle-school grade levels, the general education students, the predominance of students, are in the green and yellow at this point in the year. What we noticed is that we're seeing moderate movement with our special, special populations, with our multilingual learners and with our special education students. And so what we've done is we've transitioned to doing monthly CBTs, common planning times, with all of the self-contained teachers. And that's where the supervisor of ELA and the supervisor of special services work together to lead those common planning times that was instituted. Also, the ELA supervisors work with the bilingual and ESL teachers directly with coaching cycles and support. They are part of that, those experiences, those CPT experiences to ensure that we, and I hope that, that you remember in September, no, in August, you voted on the adaptations, the bilingual adaptations. That's what we are working to institute and fortify in those classrooms. So that's the coaching work that's taking place. This is our second year of those accadience assessments in the younger grade levels. And just as a point, all of our K-one and two students, all of them are English-language learners, right? All of them. So we wanna make sure that, that's why I didn't break that data out by demographics, okay? Because they're all learning the English language, okay? So we, we've learned some things. We've learned that progress monitoring has to happen every two weeks. We've learned that we need to support our teachers in identifying what is the small group instruction that takes place when you are monitoring that. Just to give you a quick insight into that, nonsense word fluency is an assessment tool- nonsense word fluency is an assessment tool. Right? We assess using nonsense words. We do that because we want to know, do students, can they identify the sounds and learn spelling pattern? Right? You don't instruct students on nonsense words. That's not an instructional move that you do. It's simply an assessment tool to see if students are connecting sound to phoneme. Okay? So those, that's a, that's a really learning piece that some of our teachers are experiencing. And we can now engage in that work with much more meaningful and be intent with that. So teachers are receiving that type of instruction and support. We have those literacy intervention meetings, which are very, very revealing and pretty powerful. They've strengthened even the conversations that building principals are having with teachers. We also are about to engage, and this is the, I know there's, there's more here, but I really want to take this two seconds. We are about to engage in a pilot project that will take place for the larger group next year. It is called the Just Write Reader Initiative, where that accadience data, remember I mentioned that students need to practice and they need decodables? Well, we now have partnered with Just Write Readers and they are going to create, they take our accadience data, map 10 decodables every two weeks for each student to take home, to practice, to build their reading skills. And they do this by making sure that that data that we give them focuses on those specific phonics skills where the students are. Okay? So we're looking, we're pretty excited about it. We're about to launch it at Park, Lincoln, and at Forest Street School. This whole idea of kids getting, getting to take home their, their own decodable books. With that said, if there are no other questions? Yes?
Thank you.
So that, that's, I'm going to answer this in a kind of backwards way. So the standards have changed, but we were always planning on doing this. So the fact that the standards kind of caught up to us is great. Right? Because this is, we recognize that this is where things are moving. We are a science of reading district. When you guys implement, gave us the permission to implement letters, that was the pathway towards this, and the state is finally catching up.
And one quick question, last year, bilingual learners made up about half of the district.
Just under, about, about 44%, about that.
But 10-40s? Bilingual student enrollment percentages are larger in the lower levels.
Yes. They are, they are much larger in the, in the younger grade levels than they are in the middle, but then they explode again at the high school. Yeah. They explode at, at the high school again. The lower levels is pretty high, and then it feels like it, it kind of dips off. And then that ninth, eight, nine, it just goes back up again.
Just the percentage is not necessarily the number of students?
No, the number of students.
It's, it's, it's the number of students. It's the number of students. It's the number of students.
So did that new students come in anymore?
No, like a week? Like to the week, right? Ten new students a week?
Yeah.
At high school? And that's on the lower end?
Okay.
You come in like, one of like the afternoon, you see families all sitting out there in the front streets.
Yeah. We're, I don't know necessarily why that, that is, but it is very high on the two ends. And I don't want to say that we're, I don't want you to give a miss, a misinterpretation like we're not getting students in the middle. We, we are. It's just there's more on the two ends. Okay? You're welcome.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, board, colleagues, our staff and families at home in our Orange community. I'm going to take you through, so Ms. Harris did the winter diagnostic comparison for ELA. I'm going to, we're going to look at math and science now. So she did a good job of setting context for when these assessments were given and all that. So in an attempt to be efficient, I'm going to skip that part and just get into, get into the numbers.
So you're saying we shouldn't ask you no questions, huh?
I didn't say it all, Ms. Johnson. Okay. So just as a refresher, these are the scores from the fall for I Ready. And as we know, I Ready is given to grades K through eight. You'll notice a smaller number of students in the eighth grade. And if we recall, that's because our eighth graders who take Algebra I take the NWA. So there's a portion of students that don't take the assessment. So these were our scores from the fall. And just to reorient you, starting from the left, it has students that are three or more grade levels below, two grade levels below, one grade level below, early-on grade level, and then mid or above grade level. Anything that has an asterisk, that's because technically it's not possible. Right? So if you have a student, there's a 1% of students in kindergarten that are two grade levels below. You can't be two grade levels below kindergarten. That just means that student, where they tested, they, they landed, you know, significantly below where they need to be. So we put asterisks there just to denote that for you. So as we move from the fall to the winter, you'll see there's a, a jump in scores. And we're going to go through grade level by grade level, and we're going to also go through the highlights of what those, those, that movement was toward the end. So we'll, we'll go through it. But you can see there's, there's a significant increase in the number of students that were either early-on grade level or mid or above grade level and a decrease in students that were at the, the lower ends of the spectrum. So I'm going to take you through grade by grade. So this is our kindergarten. This is where the students landed in the winter. And once again, it's broken out by demographic. Once again, Ms. Harris did a good job of explaining how the demographics were identified and all that. You can see, just like in ELA, there's going to be a significant number of students in that one grade level below area, kind of right in that middle cusp. And that'll be consistent across the grade levels. This is first grade. Grade two. Grade three. Grade four. Grade five. Grade six. Grade seven. And grade eight. Grade eight, the data is a little skewed. As we know, like, most of our advanced students are the ones that take Algebra I. Students that have, already have high student achievement are the ones that take Algebra I. So they'll be in the NWA data when we see that. But there's a significant number of students that are in the Math VIII that have done well. This is the NWA. So the NWA is a little different. You'll see there's small numbers of students in grades K through seven. Our special needs population takes this assessment. They take this and I Ready to get multiple measures. When we're talking about small group instruction and the targeted way in which students are instructed, they get two assessments in our special needs. In grade eight, it's those students as well as our Algebra I students. And then grades nine through 12, nine through 11, it's primarily just about all of our students. Grade 12, it's a smaller number because it's the students, we give this assessment to students that are in Algebra I, geometry, or Algebra II. So any senior that's taking this assessment is a, is a 12th grader who's in one of those courses. This is what it looked like in the winter. So once again, we saw, in, we're looking at our grades eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, where the primary, where the larger numbers of students are taking this assessment. We saw an increase in percentiles. One thing to orient you to with the NWA, it's different than I Ready. It's about percentiles. And the percentiles, similar to what Ms. Harris was describing with the other assessment, they change from fall to winter. So the same score, let's say, and I'm just pulling a number out of, this is not the actual score, but say a 213 is a 50th percentile in the fall. That 213 will not be the 50th percentile in the winter because there's an expectation that you have grown. And so it's, it's compared to all the students across the nation that are taking this test. So in order to go up in percentile, you, let me say this differently. Your score can go up and your percentile could actually go down if it did not go up at the same rate as other students. So we'll go through the grade levels. So for this, we only did the breakout for demographic for eight and up because like we said, for all the lower grades, it was only special needs students who were, were taking the assessment. So this is grade eight. And you can see a significant number of the students in the higher percentiles. And just a refresher of how percentiles work, if you're at the 50th percentile, you are the average student across everybody. So anything above 50th is a student that is above average, above average nationally, not just for our district, but anyone who has taken this assessment. Grade nine. Grade 10. Grade 11. And once again, grade 12 will look different because it's only a small portion of the students that are taking this assessment. I'm actually going to skip to the end to the highlights and then come back to do science because I want to show you the highlights for math first. So when we talked about I Ready, a couple of things we saw. So there was an increase in students into the early-on.
All right, can you hear me?
Much.
Thank you, Mr. Harper. Okay. So there was over 300 students that moved into those two buckets of basically early-on grade level or mid-level. So it's an average of about 9% moving up into that bucket. There were over 500 students, or about 500 students, that moved out of either two or three grade levels below. So about 14% of our students moved out of those lowest buckets up the, up the chain. We had 60% of our, or the median progress for annual typical growth was 60%. So what does that mean? Annual typical growth, we've talked about this before, but just as a refresher, that is every student at every grade level when they take the assessment, they're given what's called typical growth. So if I'm a third grader and I scored a 350 on my fall assessment, they take the average of every student that has scored a 350 at third grade in the fall, and they give you, what did they score at the end? What's their typical growth? What's the average growth of the year? So if you're thinking about average, and this is based on the nation. So an average student at the midpoint, you would think would be at 50% progress, right? They would be halfway there. Now also keeping in mind, our windows are shorter than the national norm. Normally, there's 30 weeks between the first and last assessment. Ours are 24. That's for a lot of reasons. One, it allows us to monitor progress. Also, a lot of our teachers use this for SGOs, allows them to use that data for their evaluations and all of that. So there's a lot of reasons for that. So 60% median progress in a shorter window means it's better than average in a shorter amount of time. So just put that in perspective. And then the final point, 43% of the students improved their placement. So 1,400 students went up a level. So for the NWA, we had an increase in the high average or high average, or the high percentiles in grades eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12, in those main grades. And we had a decrease in the, the lower percentiles in eighth, 11, and 12. We also saw that 50, so the NWA sets goals the same way that, and much in the same way that I Ready does. It gives students goals, but, but it will also give you a goal from fall to winter and then a goal from fall to spring. So 54% of our students met their goal from fall to winter. And 63% of the students actually increased their scale score. You remember, an increase in scale score doesn't always necessarily mean you moved up, but that's, but they, they did better, and now it's a comparison of how did they do compared to the rest. So I'm going to go back to science. So for science, we also use the NWA. And this is our first year using this. So just a reminder, this is the, the first time that we've used this assessment this year. And it's, it's a first time we've had a nationally normed assessment for our science assessments to, and our goal to really monitor what's going on and see how our students are doing and, and track progress. So this was what it looked like in the fall. And a reminder, so there's asterisks at the bottom. The NWA does not give percentiles for grades 11 and 12. So what we did in order to be able to track data, we, we did a statistical progression, projection based on, if you follow the growth for the percentiles, it goes up between one and a half and two points each grade level. So whatever is the 50th percentile in third grade, if you add one and a half to two points, it's about what's in fourth grade. So we were able to basically get a line that's fit and project for 11th and 12th grade. So those are, those are our projections. That's why there's asterisks there. Those are not actual percentiles given by the assessment because it doesn't. So this is the winter. So what we saw was actually a slight dip in the percentages, right? We saw students, and that goes back to what we were talking about earlier, about a same percentile in the fall is not the same, like, the same score in the fall will not give you the same percentile in the winter. So I'm going to go through each grade level and then go to the highlights for this. So this is what the breakdown looks like for grade three. Grade four. Grade five. Grade six. Grade seven. Grade eight. Grade nine. Grade 10. Grade 11. And then, just like with mathematics, not all of our students in grade 12 take it. It's only students that are in the core classes of biology, chemistry, or physics. So highlights for science. We actually saw a increase in the percentage of our students, our multilingual students. They showed more movement than our other students in, in science. So some more of them moved up in the high school grades, moved up into those high and high, high average and high percentile ranges, and moved out of the low and low average percentile ranges. And 61% of our students actually increased their scale score from fall to winter.
Okay.
So that is the end of my data presentation. But if you'll indulge me for a minute, I have one thing that I wanted to share with everyone. So as I came back into the office at the end of the day after being in the field, Mr. Draper asked me if I had seen the article that was published, and I told him I had not seen it yet, and he handed me a fresh copy of the Essex Times. And we didn't have a board meeting last month, so we didn't get to share that. So our Orange High School students are featured on page 19.
Oh, nice.
Yes. For last month, we were in the David Good 3D-printed Bridge Competition in our Orange High School tornadoes. First in the category of stupid bridges. So what does that mean? That means that their bridge was able to hold weight while deforming the least. So their, it's a 3D-printed bridge, it held over 190 pounds.
It means we won.
It means we won.
So, like I said, if you want to all just want to read the students' hands out, so they're officially in the record, so our students were Leslie Morales, Andrew Morgan, Eduardo Marca, Dylan Humes, Joel Wampa, and Alfonso Porzingis. Just to congratulate our coach and teacher, Ms. Sonia Nobles.
Come, Ms. Nobles.
And others who had our hand in their success, obviously their assistant principal, Mr. Montesino, their, our STEM supervisor who mentored and coached the team, Mr. Navali, and of course, their proud principal, Mr. Belton.
That's right.
On the website, I will turn it over to Mr. Ballard for the facilities update. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sathari. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, good evening.
Allergies are definitely so clean here. I'm going to do a quick facilities update. Mr. Baskin, I think he gave us tonight another engagement he had at the tent, so. The district facilities team is planning to do all of the thorough cleaning and disinfecting. This is one of the weird times of the year where the weather is getting cold one day, then it's hot another day. I know some of you are a little chilly in here, I just want to say that is because we have turned the boiler off. The boiler's off because we have now turned to spring, so I cannot have both the boiler and the air conditioner on at the same time. We also buy an exterior door, so that exterior door is blowing a cold air, okay? So again, we continue to do all that thorough cleaning related to COVID. I don't have a cold, I have allergies, just so that we all know. The installation of the new boilers over at Rosa Park was completed in February. We started the renovation of the floor over at Orange Prep, ran into some challenges. Without getting into too much detail, the floor project had to stop because we were getting a lot of water infiltration still that was coming through the gymnasium floor. And so ultimately, we had the, here's a good picture, so we started to remove the whole floor, and then we had a really bad rainstorm, and we noticed water coming up through the floor, which is ultimately going to go on the gym floor, which is all going to be wood, by the way. So we stopped the project while the SDA and their engineers are coming up with a proper fix, so that we don't continue to have this problem. What we did is provided we're back down on the floor, this way the gym floor still can be utilized. Once we have an update, again, once our architects and engineers provide that information, we'll make sure that we inform everyone. Over at Orange Prep, we also had to deal with some water infiltration through the downspouts and the gutters. So essentially, what we did was we cleaned them, we cleared them, and that allowed for the water not to pond in that particular area, which ultimately was coming back into the building. Cleaned all that stuff out, because we believe that's part of what the issue was related to the gym floor. So some of these older buildings, they have the downspouts and the gutters inside the walls of the, the building, right? So you have the brick, you have the gutters, the leaders, and when it rains, you see up, up at the top, that white piece? That's where the water gets captured, and it ultimately runs through the building and the inside of the brick in the building, down into the, the floor and then out the door. So we think that's what the problem was, not 100% sure. Needless to say, we found a lot of stuff in there that shouldn't have been there, which probably was related to the issues that we were having. Here's the new boilers.
Nice.
I'm extremely excited about this. Mrs. Sharif was talking about it earlier today, we were in the executive session a little while ago. We financed this project using other people's money. That means the district did not have to pay for it, which, that's extremely, extremely huge accomplishment, because there are a lot of different grants and things of that nature that we're always looking for. And this is a project that we utilized PSCNG and other sources of funding in order to Also over at Rosa, these are some heat pumps, so you see all brand new piping and everything. This boiler room did not look like this. It looked completely different, I would say it like that. Still, this, if you look at the floor, you can see kind of like the rust on the left-hand side, you can see where the water was pounding and it was rusting from the steam and all other good stuff. Ultimately, this is what it looks like at the high school. So for an extended period of time, we were unable to really ascertain why the new wing couldn't use bathrooms, right? We had events, things of that nature, you have to walk over to the other side, students, teachers, et cetera, you know, we got a lot of nice nasty grams that basically said, why can't I use this bathroom on the other side? Ultimately, we had to dig up the whole street. This is a SDA project, so the district could not touch this project, because if we did, then we would void the warranties that come with the building. So we had to leave it to the state and their architects, engineers, in order to find out what was going on. The city believed it was the state, the state believed it was the city, the district said, we don't care who it is, we just want to fix. Ultimately, they did that, we had a little bit of a break, and Mr. Belton can attest to this, we ripped up the whole entire street, the whole entire front of the building, and they ultimately found this stuff right here inside the pipes, which looks like sandbags and concrete. So at some point in time during the construction, this got into the line, and that's what was ultimately causing the backup. To my knowledge, we haven't had any complaints about the area backing up, so hopefully, everything that was done has resolved.
I mean, events.
Let us.
Questions?
Yes, sir.
Improper disposal, or just?
I think it's a sink. Because it wasn't, the bag was a small bag, it wasn't like a huge bag or anything, so it was like, it looked like something accidentally got into the line.
Okay.
That was one of those weird construction things, but it was a small, you know, lot of concrete that was there.
All right.
This is them digging up the street, the old pipe in the street. So work orders continue to be instituted privately. Every morning, Mr. Baskin meets with the facilities team to assign work. It's one of our pet peeves to ensure that the buildings are in the best shape they possibly can be, you know, without having the buildings being conducive to learning, the students don't really focus on learning, they focus on all the other things that are wrong, right? Whether it's the lighting, whether it's the heat, whether it's the cool. So we try to do our best, and while Mr. Baskin works with his team every morning to assign work orders out. We don't always get to get to everything right away, because there are some projects that are more prioritized than others, but we do our best to double back and make sure we address the majority of the concerns that we can as quickly as possible. We met with the SDA, the superintendent and I had the pleasure of walking the new Cleveland Elementary School. I think the superintendent was ecstatically pleased during the walkthrough, there were some things that he just didn't know was taking place, and needless to say, I had him smiling the whole, he was in a bad mood, too.
Was he?
But that, when he went to, we went to the school, he was elated, and I, like, he was, and we both were, because the last time we had both seen, I, I, I probably seen it sooner than he did, which was probably sometime in March, but he hadn't seen it since December. And so those two, three months was a big drastic change. We were getting really close to having some other really big announcements concerning this school, but once that time comes, the superintendent, I'll let him make that, make that announcement.
Oh, would you like to make it tonight?
No, we wouldn't.
It's not.
Yes, sir.
My apologies for not using the mic before, if necessary. It might be another 20 years before we get to ask this question again, but it was a once in a generation event. Do we have any earthquake damage standing in our buildings?
That's a good, that's a very good question.
That's a fantastic question. So the county has some new southwards, I'm like, do you guys have any earthquake damage? Like, no, everything was fine, everything was great. We were at STEM, and we noticed the retaining wall cracked, it was protruding, and there was tree damage in the retain, so we had to do some work. Mrs. Zachary sent the pictures to the county so they could see what happened. I don't know what they're going to do, but now we actually need to do a little bit more investigative work throughout the rest of the building, because to the naked eye, most things seem to be in place, until you really start to, to dig and uncover and see they are in place. So I asked the team to do a thorough walkthrough of each building, because if something is broken from the earthquake, or if it's not broken from the earthquake, we're going to say that it was broken from the earthquake. Did I say that on the mic? Sorry.
You didn't say that.
Anyway, moving right along, the health and safety of everyone in the district is of the utmost importance, so the team will continue to do all cleanings and to monitor the repairs as needed. Hopefully, you all have seen a drastic change in where the buildings were once upon a time to where they're ultimately leading to. I think the, the new boilers and some of the lighting and things that you've seen in some of the other slides shows that we were really invested in upgrading the buildings and making them a safer environment for our students and for our teachers and staff. Follow us on social media. I believe that concludes the facilities update, and it also concludes the superintendent's report.
Wow. So at this point in the meeting, we were approved of board minutes, but we're going to table them because we had our computers taken away, we couldn't review the minutes, so we're going to approve them next board meeting, along with the committee report. So now I'm going to go into public comments. Can I get a motion to go into public comments?
Motion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I get a motion to table the board minutes, February 28th, public vote?
There has been a motion to table the board minutes, both public and private. It was moved by Mr. Winfield, and it was seconded by Vice President Gravesandy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? Hearing none, motion carried. Yeah, we don't need to.
I didn't, I wasn't going to clip table, I'm just going to go past them and do. Can I get a motion to go into public comments?
Motion.
There's been a motion by Mr. Henry to go into public comments, it's probably seconded by Vice President Gravesandy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? Hearing none, motion carried.
Yeah, please, write, read the disclaimer.
So the City of Orange Township Board of Education encourages participation and input from members of the public at its board meetings. However, in accordance with board policy, verbal attacks against individual staff members or members of the board are not permitted. Persons are encouraged to address the board regarding comments related to agenda items or issues concerning the educational process. Public comments are limited to one per attendee for a maximum duration of three minutes. Please be advised, this meeting is being recorded and live streamed via internet. The Board of Education thanks you for your cooperation.
Miss. I have to save it because I else you're going to get it to download.
Good evening, Tisa Singleton, 467 Fairview Avenue. As you all are aware, I wear many hats in the district, but, so I have a few different concerns for different reasons, but I would like to thank the district on behalf of myself and my students for getting the cool eclipse glasses. It was so awesome, and thank Mrs. Kateri for coming to visit us over at Lincoln. It was so cool for our students to have that moment in time and be able to get to share that with them. So thank you so much for that. One of the concerns that's on the agenda tonight for the resolution to approve the cosmetology program renovations at the high school, I'm hoping that you already have like a feasible location set out inside of the high school where it won't take as long as some renovations have been taken lately, so our students could just like jump right into this program, and seeing that they fixed some of the sewer issues is like extremely exciting to see as well. And one of the last concerns was, on behalf of the OEA, we would like to know, is there any way that we can get assistance sent to the Cleveland Street, Cleveland Street School CST members? They have some of the largest caseloads in the district, significantly larger than some of their colleagues inside of other buildings, and we would like to be able to know, maybe they have some type of reprieve coming in their direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Singleton.
Ms. Harper will be addressing that, right? Hi, my name is Elly Saint-Hilaire. I do want to say thank you to the board, the superintendent, and Ms. Williams Ware for giving us some knowledge about the mental wellness and mental well-being of students and staff. I do have some questions, though. I'm sorry, I forgot his name, the, the student representative. Okay, he did indicate that he does, he is taking surveys about the lunches and how students are not eating or prefer not to eat, and, you know, it, it does have an impact on the academic portion, because when a student does not eat, then they can't focus on their academics, right? And I'm glad that he took that initiative to take those surveys. And continuing with the survey, Ms. Williams Ware, or the, the district, I'd like to know if, if they have taken surveys among students about how are the SEOs working and how do they feel about it? Because if students are unaware of their own emotions, how can the teachers be aware of their, of their emotions, you know? And because that, that, that impacts their relationships with their peers. And I'm here because of my daughters, because that impacts the relationship, because if you have a student who is struggling at home, and the parent is unaware or uneducated about that piece, that emotional awareness piece, if the parent's unaware, the child isn't aware, the, the, the teacher is unaware, and so you have these students going, you know, affecting their relationships, right, with their peers? So that's another part. And then, how are parents being informed that all these great things are happening within the district? How are they being informed? And how is that, how is, how is that being impacted, you know, with their children at home? What is the education piece, and how are they being educated? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Abi Solaw Shintolu, and I just wanted to say something about the, the Orange Public Library. The other day, we took a walk there, myself and one of the colleague who lives in Orange, and I was surprised to see how it has really gone so bad. As you all know, Tito is my son, we grew, he grew up in Orange, I would, we would literally live in a library. I mean, like, we would take our bags there, we would get books from the library, the library is so bad. We're talking, and I really thank Ms. Ari for giving us that data about ELA and the science of reading and all of this. We cannot get this done if the library is. And the science of reading and all of this, we cannot get this done if the library is not functional. It is really bad. And, and, yeah, and we inquired into what could be done. Um, we found out that the, um, the city has nothing, they, it's, it's not about, the city cannot really do anything about it. So, as a school district, I was wondering, what can we do? Surely during the summer months, is there a way where we can use our library as a resource? I mean, our school libraries as a resource for our students? We need to do something, cause we, if we're expecting a different outcome and we keep doing the same thing, it's insanity, right? It's not gonna happen. So I was just wondering if uh, there's something we can do as a district to make sure that the library is alive again. And our kids can go there and get the resources they need during the summer months and even during the school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more comments? Can I get a motion to close public comments? Sure. You can announce it.
All concerns that were raised, as you know, they're gonna be addressed.
The superintendent will send it to the appropriate department for the, your questions and answers. Can I get a motion to close public comments?
There's been a motion to close public comment by uh, Mr. Winfield, properly seconded by uh, Board Vice President Gravesandy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? Hearing none, motion carried.
Kill me. Can I get a motion to do a consent agenda?
Motion.
There's been a motion to do a consent agenda by uh, Mr. Henry, and it's been properly seconded by Mr. Armstrong. Do we have any discussion?
Go ahead.
Under staff and students, N two. Resolution to approve authorized district field trips. I noticed that there's some elementary schools that are missing, do we have a reason why? Cause I see the high school is there, I see Cleveland, Lincoln, but the others aren't there.
So, some of their approvals could have come prior months. They may use some of the pre-approved trips as well, so therefore you wouldn't see each of them as relegated on that agenda item.
Okay, alright. Also, I just wanna bring, uh, not so much of a, um, a question, but like a statement for N three. N four and N five, just like the Singleton, I just wanted to know if you could just expand upon what accommodations there. During the renovation period for these programs, please just briefly.
I got it. So, thank you for uh, that question, board member Gravesandy. Excuse me, over at the high school, um. We did some early demo work, uh, that wasn't really invasive. But we are still waiting on the permitting process, so right now that project is not um, advancing. Neither is the um, culinary arts or the chemistry room, right? This process here, with this resolution coming to the board for approval. Will ultimately allow us to submit this to the Department of Education. The Department of Education will consider this along with our long-range facilities plan. And then once, and hopefully approved by them, which it should be, we have a conversation with them tomorrow. Then we can start the construction process. Our hope and expectation was to try to have this work, excuse me, started during the break. But that didn't happen. Um, so ultimately, what we're gonna do is try to work off hours. To try to get the majority of the uh, loud noise done. So that any work that we're doing during the day wouldn't impact the instructional time. Uh, we've also asked the principal to relocate the students in that particular area, which there aren't many. Uh, to other areas of the uh, building, so that this way. Even though, even that non-invasive noise could still become a distraction, so we asked if they could relocate them to another part of the building.
Do we have like a timeline for all of this, estimated at least?
Uh, no, I'll know better tomorrow. We meet with um, DOE Office of Facilities tomorrow at eleven o'clock, us and our architects.
Okay, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Nope, you can go.
Just for, you know, the public at large, in-house and as well as the viewing public. Uh, can you shed a little bit more, can you shed clarification on the Mox Five Master Service Agreement?
Uh, yes, I'm gonna defer to uh, Ms. Kling. Testing.
Yes, so the, the Mox Five is a company that's um, a data security company. That we are, well, you are being asked to approve, to contract with, to come in and um. Help Mr. Cortez install, in fact, maybe he should be explaining this and not me. But help Mr. Cortez um, upgrade some of your systems, um, install some additional um, programming. And undergo some additional training with his staff, um, in light, what? Oh, okay, great. Um, in light of, um, you know, the, the advance in overall um. Computer software technology, AI, et cetera, um, the, the threats to any kind of system. Has become, that's not what I said, has become um, even more prevalent. So, this company is going to come in, is going to, they're going to be onsite remotely, they're going to be available for consultation. And they are going to help install these new programs and hardware systems and do the training with your IT department. Yes. 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 Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay.
I have another question on um, L three.
Yes, so uh.
The one with Mayor's Mayor, um, Circle of Excellence Camp. How are we with the others, um, requests with payment for use of facility?
So, we've received some payment from the city in the past for some of our programs. Uh, we have not received payment for all of them. Um, we remain in partnership with them for their programs as we do them uh, for our programs. I.e. the use of the fields across the street from Oprah and other fields throughout the city. To ensure that our children um. Have the opportunity to play softball, play baseball, and other activities like gym. So, we kinda work in tandem with one another. To ensure that um, we are still providing the children in the city with um, opportunities that. They need in order to be successful.
Okay, thank you. Um, just bear in mind, although we wanna provide um. Extracurricular activity for students, um, we also have to ensure that we have a financial obligation to the district also.
Yes, I, I do understand. Ms. Gravesandy, I really do.
Okay, I know you do, and I know you advocate for us, but I just want to be transparent.
Okay. Okay, Dr. Turner?
I have a question, just because, just to, just to clarify, because um. We don't wanna create a narrative that um, we are letting certain entities um. Use our facilities for free. So, I just, even though you said it, I want to clarify, in addition, and, and hopefully I'm not saying anything that I should not be saying. But in addition to us. Them utilizing our facilities, facilities at no charge, do we also utilize their facilities at no charge?
Yes, that's correct. So.
We, we charge them, but do we pay for this, do we, does the school board pay to use their facilities?
So, um, the school board does not get charged to utilize the fields that they have. The city has in fact paid us fifty thousand dollars for the use of uh, the mayor's um. Circle of Excellence Camp last year, and the same resolution is for fifty thousand for this year.
Right.
But, but no, we do not pay them to use their.
Okay, I just wanna clarify that we are not um, allowing. The city, we're not being taken advantage of. Again, there, I don't want the narrative to go out that the city's taking advantage of um, this, this Board of Education. So as Mr. Ballard stated, they have paid us for the use of our facilities. And they have also not charged us for the use of their facilities, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. But we do charge the city, that's what he said. The city doesn't charge us.
Yes, we do not charge the city to rent the facilities.
So the goal is to have a working relationship, for example, if something happens within one of our schools. And the city has to bring over additional officers to protect our, our students, or just to make sure our students are being well-protected. They're not charging us to um, to have their police on staff for us. Because the goal for us is to work together with all of the stakeholders in order to ensure that our students are safe. And in turn can um, enjoy extracurricular activities and achieve. Excellence, be good to great, so.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Sure.
I have a few, but regarding what was just discussed, uh, the facilities request. Unless I get some updated information, I want to be clear, um, there's a lot of uses uh, of our facilities by City Hall. For a number of programs. And I'm almost positive that we don't get compensated for every last program. Um, I don't see it in the finance documents. I don't see invoices sent to City Hall to collect these monies. Uh, it's, I don't see it on our end, and I don't see it on the city's in, in their accounts receivable. Details that they post twice a month. In their public documents that can be viewed by anybody on their website. Um, when we had the audit last year, I brought up uh, the city not paying us. And Mr. Ballard told the auditors that the city owes us millions.
I don't recall me saying millions. I think it was the reverse, uh, Ms. Tara. Wait, 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 one voice, one voice.
Hey, 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 hey.
One voice, one voice, go ahead, Ms. Tara.
Let Mr. Tara finish, and then we all can chime in, please.
Okay, regarding that water bill comment, um, we don't pay the city to, for, for use of the water, alright? When the water bill comes, it comes from the company to us, alright? So, the city has not been paying anything, and I can absolutely back that up. Because we don't have meters on the building for, 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 for them to uh, you know, charge us anything.
Correct.
One directive that the state made was that we installed meters on the buildings. Uh, this was maybe two or three years ago, when I was last a board member. One, one of the directives from the state was that we installed meters on these buildings. So we can start um, having a full accounting of water usage by the district. But even when those meters are on the building, our money does not go to the city, alright? So they, they are not paying anything for water usage. Um, regarding use of whatever, you know, parks that we have within the city. Um, honestly, if there's a charge, I'd rather we get charged. Because I can, from what I've seen in the past, uh. Our usage of some of those fields for our, for our teams does not equate how much they use for, how much they uh, use our buildings. It does not equate. Again, like, like I said, I've been on the board since twenty eighteen, and um, I've had past board members make comments at those meetings where I was board, was board member. Saying that they were like uh, equal billing, or at least up-to-date billing of usage of our facilities. And if they have to charge us something, then you know, send us the bills. But like I said, from my review and from my first three years as a board member, and this last year and a half. I don't see any invoices going from, from, from our, from Orange Public Schools to City Hall, so.
So.
Are you finished, Mr. Tara, or are you still? Okay.
Yeah, certainly, so we don't send bills directly to any of our, uh, vendors, uh, customers that utilize the buildings. Uh, Facilitron does that, so they enter their request just like anyone else into the Facilitron system. The one difference between uh, the city and other uh, customers. Excuse me, is we don't charge them for the rental. We bill them for the uh, security and, and a custodial, right? But that's all through Facilitron, that's not an invoice that comes directly from the district or from the business office.
Can I also just make one quick comment? So the, the majority of the usage of the facilities are for the students of, and the citizens of, of, of Orange. So, most of the stu, most of our students are benefiting from the programs that they're um, putting on.
Every year, once City Hall does their budget, they have monies in their budget to pay for our facility usage, alright? We're using our, our students' money to pay the, the security and the custodial staff for their usage of the building.
No, we charge them for that. We charge them for that.
We charge them, but we still end up paying the custodians. And then, yes, we do, because they have not been paying regularly in the past.
They just, he just said they paid fifty thousand dollars.
Let him, let him finish. And then we can chime in.
Where we've received money from the district. Excuse me, from, from City Hall to pay for um, our custodians and for our uh, security for when the city used our buildings. I don't see them. I know we're using um, Facilitron now, but Facilitron is a recent um, change to, to our billing. Within the last year and a half or two years, I, I believe.
That's correct, yes.
But years before that, um, there was no Facilitron, and there were no invoices getting sent. Um, I made a comment last year about Facilitron, where I don't see any details of who's paying what to the district. Um, I, I brought that up, um, Mr. Sugar, I remember Mr. Sharif said, making comments saying that we don't need to see that. If we go on the bills, we need to see what bills are being paid, what bills are getting collected, excuse me, what bills are getting collected. But I don't see that on a monthly basis.
Okay, uh, let me just say this, that is just not right, I said that we need not to see that, I did not say that. I said that if it's anything questionable from you, we should contact Mr. Ballard and the business manager in the district to give us report on that. I don't see, I did not say we don't, we don't need to see that, because we need to see every transaction that coming from the board to the district. However, what we want to put out here is that. If we have additional information that we may need for Mr. Ballard to work on, we can give him that task to work on and give us report. What you just said, I conclude it to be that we are paying the bill and you're not paying us back. I have not get information that we are just paying and you're not paying us back. However, I would like Mr. Ballard work on that and give the report on that. In this fourth meeting, we will do it to, you need a close session.
I, I believe that whatever monies are collected by Facilitron, they need to be included in all of the monthly financial statements.
All the information that you need, Mr. Ballard will collect it and will do it by today.
Alright, well, like I said, I, I don't want it to be a, a request every time Facilitron collects.
So, so.
Yeah, let him finish, let him finish.
I don't want it to be a request every time Facilitron collects money. We're the non-state officials here, and we're supposed to make sure we, our monies are getting collected.
That's right.
That's what we vote on every month. So it should, we shouldn't have to put in a request to see if bills are being paid, that needs to be a document that's included in the financial statements on a monthly basis. That's our job to make sure that this stuff goes on.
Okay, if that's lacking, we'll work on that to make sure that we all have that report.
Wait, 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 I just have a clarifying question, because. The money that is collected from Facilitron does get included in the financial statements every month, so I don't want the. The the thought process to be that it's not, because it is. Any miscellaneous revenues that are collected are put into a miscellaneous revenues category. What you don't, what you don't have is a breakdown of Jason Ballard gave you a hundred dollars. Chonique Johnson gave you another hundred dollars, that you don't have, but the miscellaneous revenue is included on a monthly basis. From Facilitron or any other source of miscellaneous revenue that the district receives.
And am I clear, when we go through our budget, you do tell us um what goes into that miscellaneous?
Yes, so for example, uh, last year, Facilitron itself collected fifty-three or fifty-four thousand dollars, something to that effect. The first year that we had Facilitron, we collected forty-three thousand something to that effect. The city did not pay us by Facilitron, they paid us by check, I have a copy of the check, just so that I could show everyone that we have a check. Um, but we do absolutely include the miscellaneous revenues on a monthly basis in our financials. That that happens every single month.
Mr. Ballard, I want to add that the finance committee also, um, it was discussed in finance committee. It was also written in the minutes of the finance committee report. So if you read those minutes, you're gonna see that we discussed the money received from the city. And also, Mr. uh, Mr. Tava, I don't understand why you're saying we voted, since you've been re-elected, we have never voted on any of the agenda items for our students.
What, what are you talking about?
I just want you to know that, that you cannot, cannot say we voted, but you don't, okay, just make a note of that.
I, I abstain for for other purposes that I don't feel like talking about, but.
Let's please, let's just move, move on, let's move on, please.
I would like to see the, instead of just, I, I would like to see the line items.
When you say line item.
Hey, can one, please, one person at a time, please, thank you.
Can you speak in the microphone, Mrs. Zachary, thank you so much, can't hear, can't hear.
Yes.
Hello, um, currently, what you're asking for are daily receipts that we receive. When you talk about the bills list, those are things that we're paying out, so we give you a detail of what we pay out, these are receipts that come in from a vendor. So we post it, we post it to our ledger as this vendor paid us this, but you're not gonna see the actual. Individual people that we're receiving the money from, because it's coming from one vendor, now, if you want that, that's a report that comes from the vendor. But in our receipts, you're asking for daily receipts that we post to our budget or to our system on a daily.
No, wha- whatever monies that are received by Facilitron, this should be line items.
It's not gonna be in the budget, because we collecting from, we collect money from them, they can give us a report, but you're not gonna see it in our budget.
Alright, so I, I think the report should be included, because that's the only way the board members can see that if we vote on something. To let an outside entity use our facilities. Alright, I, I would like that.
But but, wait, 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 hold on. That means I have to create something, so I don't want to put a false narrative out there that there's some document that. List every single customer and the sum of money that they give to the district on a monthly basis. I have to look at it and I'll get back to you guys, that's my answer.
So.
I would like you to look in, in into seeing if Facilitron can create a line item detailed report, so we can see monies that match up with.
I understand.
I hear what she's saying.
Point, 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 point noted, point noted, I will look into it.
Okay, hey, can I get a little bit of order here, please, thank you. We are all, nine board members, let's all vote on Mr. Ballard finding a report or creating a report so that we can see what's going on. With Facilitron, it's not just one board meeting, board member saying, this is what I want. So, if we can actively, after we approve the agenda, if there's no more, no more comments or whatever. Okay, when you finish your comments, we can v- vote, and then we can take a vote on Facilitron, the payments, de- the payment.
We don't need to vote for that.
Okay, well, we can just.
Sorry, you said, so that we can see what's going on with Facilitron, I just want to correct that, we all feel like we are aware, we all. Believe that we are aware that what goes on with Facilitron, so.
But he's making a request.
No, he wants more, he wants more detail, I just want to clarify, I just want to clarify.
Mr. Ballard just said that there are no line items being provided by Facilitron as far as what specific payments are being made, so I don't see. Are you even say that you know what exact amounts are being paid, when he says that we don't have an accounting of that.
Because he did, because he reported to us what ca- came in through Facilitron.
But you don't know that this, this, this uh specific resolution paid a twenty-five thousand dollar fee.
Okay, so, that part? We're gonna, no.
And the facility.
Okay, so.
So I'm fine with that answer for now.
Okay, can we move on from that, Mr. Ballard said he will get back to us with that, Mr. Tava, do you have any more comments?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Resolution to approve Mox five, I'll take the security company, um. Was there, what was the cost for for this?
It's, it's in the breakdown.
Which item is it?
Mox, the Mox five.
I don't have that document.
H.
It's in your documents that you were sent.
Yeah, I can't access it right now.
I don't have it.
I, I didn't have my computer and I set my passwords or somehow.
Do you have it as well?
I'm, I'm gonna see if I can find it.
You, you weren't sent an email with the board docs, board docs is on the internet, you can get.
Hey, we haven't, yeah.
I, I've had, I've had, I've had login.
Let, let me, let me try to pull it up, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really understand why you couldn't get into board docs, but that's something that you should ask Mr. Portas about.
I did, I sent an email yesterday.
You didn't get your payment, your payment, your um, your uh password reset?
No.
I sent to everybody.
I, I didn't, I didn't have the access.
No, I texted to everybody, remember?
Oh, no, I didn't get a text for it as far as password change.
I did that, I did it a few weeks ago.
Before we actually handed in.
Yeah, no, I was, I was just saying, I, I did send it, yeah. No worries.
Can I pull to your front?
Keep going, huh, and you got it?
I'm looking to see, this is fees here.
It's, it's in, it's in an addendum.
Why they looking for that, do you have any more comments, Mr. Tava?
Yes, uh, today we're willing on uh approval of the twenty-four, twenty-five preliminary budget.
What, what number is that?
That is J six.
Okay.
I believe, and I mentioned this too in in the uh meeting with Mr. Ballard. Um, when he presented the budget to me and and Mr. Henry, um, I believe that there is much more detail as as far as which monies are going where. Um, I still provided the explanation that um, there are one-time costs on the, on the, there are one-time appropriations. On a yearly basis, that um, when the next year comes, that appropriation amount. That carries over into the next year is not being detailed on how that previous year's appropriation money will be spent the next year. So, there are, we get details, uh, general details on how. The budget increase, the state increase of monies, how how little we spend, I still think there needed to be more detail there. But last year's state increase, we get a breakdown of all the monies and and where Mr. Ballard and Mr. and Dr. Fitz you want to spend the monies. But when that same money is moved on to the next year. There's not a a breakdown of how that previous year's monies will be spent the following year, okay? So right now, I see three years of previous monies in the form of state aid increases. That have accrued, but when we come to this year, I don't see how those previous years of monies are being spent, only the current increase. So that's something that I wanted to see, I don't see that, I'm not sure if they've worked on it, or had time to work on it, but. You know, I don't feel comfortable approving the budget, if I don't know where all the money's going, okay?
Did you, did you, did you? Um, did you give a breakdown, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Tava, I just want to ask Mr. Lam, um, Zachary a que- you did give a breakdown of where the money was going, am I correct?
I did.
When you gave the budget presentation to all of us, okay. Mr. Tava, you didn't get that when you had, when you and Mr. um, Henry had your review?
I met with Mr., I met with Zach and I met with Mr. Ballard.
Right.
He gave a breakdown of the state aid increase.
Okay.
For the state aid increase.
No, I gave a breakdown for every dollar budgeted in the budget, that, no, no, let me, let me explain, so, we get our state aid. We show you how we allocate that out, now, we had additional money through audit, through cleanup, through various other projects that. We have money that we have to now budget for one time, because it goes beyond our two percent fund balance that we can put away. And our capital reserves, these are money that's, that are going back into the budget to do one-time projects, however, when it comes to money like that. You can allocate it to something like a salary that's, that goes on and on every year, because that money's one time, but I gave you a breakdown of everything. Now, you're asking about our state aid year over year, and if we don't spend something, show you how we spending it, well, the whole budget encompasses every dollar that either carried over. Into a a fund balance, or money that we couldn't put away, so we had to budget it. So you're getting the allocation of every dollar that we have, now, you wanted me to go into depth about things that we didn't do in one particular year, well, if we don't do it. Uh, if we have, let's say it's a PO in place, that money goes over to the next year, if we don't, it goes back in and we'll do that project next year. Some of those delays are out, out of our hand, we can't, we can't control it, so if we can't, like for instance signage at the buildings. It's been delayed because we're going through something with the vendor, and it just takes time to get all of those um particulars worked out. So something like that, even though the money's budgeted right now, if we can't do it now, it'll carry forward and we'll do it in the next year. But you're asking me for, I don't, I don't really know what you're asking me for, but I gave you an account for every dollar and how it's either budgeted and gonna be spent.
Um, it wasn't a full breakdown, okay.
Well, you'll, there'll be a full breakdown on April twenty-fourth.
Alright, are we, are this is a board, did we get that breakdown before?
It's, it's a public hearing.
I said be before the meeting.
I gave you, uh, I did three meetings with the board members to discuss the budget at the committee, but any committee outside prior to today. So I already gave you a breakdown of the budget, now, at the public hearing, you'll get more information, and everybody will be able to get this information.
Alright, let me, let me see if I can break this down.
Mr. Tava, I have an answer to your last question, so the Mox five agreement has a ceiling of not to exceed one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That's a not to exceed value, so if the services come in under that, because we may not need as much time for a particular thing. Then that's gonna reduce the price, but the cap is at one seventy-five, okay?
Um, getting back to what we were just talking about, say we get a budget of, say we have a budget of a hundred million dollars for the current year, right? And you allocate ten million dollars for one-time facility uses, okay, or or upgrades rather, right, infrastructure upgrades, okay? If those, that ten million dollars of infrastructure upgrades is spent in that one year. The next year, our budget increases from a hundred million dollars to one hundred ten, alright? So we have an additional ten million dollars in state aid, I saw you, you guys breakdown of our. Increase in state aid when you presented to me, alright, but the ten million dollars from from that previous year's one hundred million dollars. I did not see where that ten million dollars or how it was gonna be spent in the current year, because like I said, it's one-time cost. If you paid for all of the 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 infrastructure upgrades, then what is that ten million dollars from the previous year gonna be used for?
I'm confused, you just said it was spent or not spent, it sounded like you said the money was spent, and you want me to show you how it wasn't spent.
Right, because we're still getting a hundred million.
But you just said the money, you just said the money was spent, so if it was spent, why am I showing you how it wasn't spent? Okay, in the future year.
The appropriations, the allocations of monies, because we're still getting that hundred million dollars like we got last year.
No, we're not, that money's already allocated in salaries. It's already allocated.
We're still getting a hundred million dollar total in state aid from last year to this year, the difference is this year, we're getting an additional.
We getting a hundred million dollars?
Alright, so it's not like we spent that ten million dollars and and we're not receiving it this year, we're getting one hundred million from last year. Plus an increase of ten million dollars.
So, okay, give you a quick answer, we have, we have a contract we're doing, we're gonna have increase in salaries. We're gonna have new staff members coming on, we have new, we ha- we have grants that we no longer gonna have access to this money come September. That we're picking up those costs within district, so there's a lot of things you have to consider, we don't have, S, S is going away. We're increasing, my special education budget increased in, out of district schools alone, almost three million dollars. And we put money, and and we're putting money into compensatory um services for special education, uh, we're, we're doing, we're increasing the budget to to bring, to do no more, new in, new initiatives. Um, we still have transportation.
Transportation is already there.
Uh, hold on, we get, we get less than, in categorical spe- um, transportation aid, we get less than two million dollars. But I, but my transportation bills are over eight million dollars, so we're, we're not fully, we, we don't get a full, full allocation for transportation. No, I get what you're saying, you're not getting what I'm saying, I gave you a breakdown, so I'll tell you what, to prevent going back and forth. We'll go through the budget at the budget hearing for the public to see, you'll see how we're allocating the money, that's every single dollar, this budget is approved by the state. So that's all, that's the best I can give you, Mr. Tava, I'm sorry, so at the bub- at the public budget hearing, you'll be able to see everything that we have. Yeah, Mr. Tava, I, I respectfully disagree, I, I will go through it with you again, as we did with Mr. Henry when he was on the same meeting, we went through the budget.
You did not show us a hundred and twenty-four million dollars of of appropriations.
No, you're right, I showed you one hundred and sixty-one million, five hundred and fifty-four thousand. I did.
Okay, hey, 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 we, okay, no verbal attacks, no verbal attacks.
When you gave me and Mr. Henry our presentation, you did not give us a, a breakdown of of teacher salaries and how much that was gonna cost, you did give us a breakdown.
Okay. So, maybe. Okay, so we're not gonna keep going through this, the budget hearing is on April the twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four at.
Six o'clock?
Six P M here at four fifty-one, it will be broadcast, it will be live streamed. Any questions that you have for Mr. Ballard and Mrs. Zachary, email it, that's the best I can do. Because the back and forth is, I don't know, I, I know what I saw, and I know they say what they saw, and I'm not, maybe none of us is understanding how you feel. So if you have any other questions, Mr. Tava, I would just suggest you email Mr. Ballard and Mrs. Zachary, see, see, Dr. Fitz you.
And the state approved it, right, it's this.
No, they didn't approve yet.
I mean, they, they, so. But, but everything that you do is, goes to the state, and we have to, and we have to follow the same protocols as everybody else.
Just to give you some, um, just to give you the background of it, what I entered into the DOE net for the budget, right now, the uh county B A has reviewed it. He's currently waiting for an approved resolution from tonight, because we didn't have a March meeting, and he's going to preliminary approve. Once we have the public budget hearing, if no changes are needed, and we approve, we move the budget forward, then they go in and they put the final approval and we're done.
I just want to make it clear so that it's. It's, it's no confusion that there's, that there's nothing that can be hidden, because. There's protocols that every district has to follow.
But we're the ones that's supposed to approve this before it goes to the county superintendent.
So every board member sitting at the day is, has had the same exact presentation, there's been nothing different.
Okay, it hasn't gone to the county yet, it won't go to the county until.
I'm not talking about the county, I'm talking about everybody here in here.
I am, I know, I know what you're saying.
No, when we get elected, we are the state officials for this district, we're not city officials, we are state officials. When we approve stuff to go outside of the district, to go to the county for approval, we're supposed to see everything before we vote.
But what is it that we don't, we didn't see?
We all got our presentation.
So, all, all I was saying was the, every board member at the day is, has seen the same presentation, okay, ho- let me finish, Mr. Tava. I was very respectful, everyone, just hear me out, there has been nothing different that we've presented to you. That we presented to any other member of the, of the board up here. If you all approve the advancement of the budget to the county. That will happen tomorrow, if you approve it tonight, we will then send it to the county, the county will. Rubber stamp their approval at that point in time, because they've already reviewed it, they have. The information, because they can see what we entered into DOE net, right now, they can see it, so they'll approve it, then it will ultimately forward it to the state. Right, we'll have the public. We'll have the public hearing. At that point in time, if you all pass the budget, then it gets voted on, it's passed. At that point in time, we then move to the next phase of the process to see if there's any modifications or changes. If there's no modifications or changes, that is the budget, right? We have, i- it, it's a little unfair when I hear some of the comments that are going back and forth because it makes it sound as though we have something to hide. There's, we have nothing to hide. We're absolute, I'm not done. We're absolute open book. Every single dollar that this district receives, whether it's money that we get from the state or money that we get from grants or anything else, is out there for anyone to take a look at. In fact, we have our auditors in-house who are reviewing everything, and they're better than the auditors we had before. They're very, very thorough. At the end of the day, it's my name and my signature that goes on those documents, right? And I have the utmost financial integrity when it deals with any of this stuff. My license and my livelihood means everything to me. So, I make sure that what my office does is on point because it has to be. The children of Orange deserve it. We have nothing to hide. Every dollar that we are going to spend has been accounted for, it has been planned for. There are things that you are asking that we can't go into detail about only because we're in negotiations. So, you may see a line item that may look vague to you, but it's purposely done that way because we're still in negotiations. But I have to plan for the worst possible case scenario as it relates to negotiations to make sure that it doesn't have a, a strain on the budget, but it will have an impact on the budget. The one-time dollars that you saw, a lot of that money is earmarked specifically to facilities. The roof work, the boiler work, the lighting. That's what a majority of the one-time dollars that our auditors, the new auditors found, because the old auditors didn't know this money existed. It's the forensic work that me and my team have done that has uncovered that additional money, which is why we're now gonna take that money that we found to put it back into the district where it belongs. So, I don't, I, I hope I don't sound like I'm being rude, but I'm not. But we are an open book when it comes to our finances, and I have the utmost pride in what we do and how we do it, because it's my name, it's my livelihood, it's my license that's on the line. And I'm not gonna do anything that is not above reproach, point blank and simple.
Okay, so I just have three more comments to make. First of all, um, the budget presentation where you, that you presented to all the board members and then three small meetings that we had, did you email that to all of the board members or was it just showing me as an?
We did not give any board members any material to take away from that meeting, and we will not do that.
Why, why not?
When the budget is finalized and adopted, because, Mr. Tarver, respectfully, there's a lot of the things that we discuss and materials that we hand out that somehow make its way into the public. I can't allow that to happen right now because we're in negotiations. We, we, we're not on, I'm not withholding information because it's, it's a working document, but it, but, but it's a working.
Please, Ms. Clean, please. I didn't say he, I didn't say you couldn't. I asked for Ms. Clean, that's all I said.
You don't, Mr. Tarver, you don't have a right to copies of any board document that you request. You do have a right to access for documents that you need in order to make an informed decision. You have a right to ask administrators. But asking for a copy of the budgetary documents before they are finalized is not, it's something you can ask, but if the B A is not comfortable handing that out, it's not something that you can tell him he has to give to you. When it's official, yes, it obviously does, and it's a public record. But beforehand, so long as he makes himself available and he makes that document available to you so that you can review it, you don't have an unfettered right to copies of those confidential documents.
I, I just agree.
I know you do.
I just agree. Not being honest, I think you're wrong about that. If the board decided they wanted to see that full, I mean, that's why we get sworn in to hold.
And I said you could see it. I said you couldn't have a copy. There is a difference.
So, I, I just want to reiterate what you said, but getting back to my first, my other three things, I wanted to end this with. Um, I asked you whether I would email to, to the full board. You said, no, I understand that. I agree with, with us not being able to have copies of that. It's our job to keep that stuff confidential. Second, as far as the auditors, um, I don't agree with that statement that the auditors see everything, saw everything. Because last year at the audit, auditors meeting, they weren't even aware of the unpaid bills that City Hall did not pay to the school district.
So, last year was that audit firm's first year in the district, right? They were not aware of all the sins of the past, but I can, I, I, no. It, it wouldn't, it wouldn't show up because they're.
Okay, so we can, we can, let's just, let's just stop the back and forth. Can we, can we, can we? Will you wanna go into executive session because we're doing too much back and forth? I need to close my agenda so that I can go home. But hear what? Hear us arguing?
All, all I was, all, all I was gonna say was. No, all I was gonna say was, the auditor's first year in the district, you don't know what you don't know until you start to dig, right? As they've been in the district longer, they've uncovered things. There's a lot of sins of the past, right? I wasn't here then, but I'm very confident and happy that this audit firm is here because it shows that a lot of things that, uh, Mrs. Zachary and I have tried to implement to this district are the right things to be done, right? It's when the audit report comes out and someone says, yeah, hey, you can't have a confirming order, that everybody's like, uh-oh, we can't have confirming orders. Yeah, but I've been telling you that since two thousand and one when I got here. So, it's things like that, right? That have continued to be uncovered. The money that we just found, the ten million plus dollars that we found in money is because the auditors found it. It wasn't something that the previous firm looked at, right? So, my, my point to you is this. The more you dig into things, the more you ultimately start to find. They're still not done with our audit right now because they was finding things and they had questions. When the audit is finally wrapped up, I'll be more than happy to have them here to answer any questions that you all have because ultimately, you guys have to approve the audit, right? So, I'm fine with that.
Um, we have approved multiple facilities. This board, before I came back and after I came back, this board has approved multiple facilities use requests from City Hall since you've been here in twenty twenty-one.
Yep.
That auditor did not get their presentation until two years later in twenty twenty-three. So, the auditor should have been able to find the facilities use requests that the board approved in the two years that were here. And the auditors did not find one.
So, Mr. Tarver, the reason why? The reason, I, I, I'll answer that for you. So, they didn't audit Facilitron, right? Now, we have Facilitron. If they audit Facilitron, they can see what requests were put into Facilitron, what dollars we actually received. They haven't done an audit of that yet. Okay.
Okay, so this, Facilitron is not an agenda item, so we must.
Let me respond to what you just said. Facilitron didn't get, um, utilize its district in twenty twenty-three. There were facilities re- use requests from the summer of twenty twenty-one when you came onboard and all of twenty-two. That one going through Facilitron. That, that, you know, was handled manually by your office. So, if those invoices, excuse me, if those accounts, uh, payables were sent, receivables that were sent to City Hall, we should have some manual record of those monies coming directly to the district.
Uh, Mr. Tarver?
Yes.
Mr. Siaka.
Before those times that you are speaking out, you were not charging the, the district anything. You and I went to a meeting with the, with the mayor and people of the district. Saying that because we've been using their, uh, water and other things, and we, we don't have meter, they were charging one million point something for those things. And because we never knew what was going on, we were not charging anyone for anything. It was later two thousand and three that we decided that we make adjustment with the both entity of both, uh, district of both to make sure that we have an agreement that what we can charge for and what we cannot charge for. So, at that time, when an auditor come to a facility to audit, I'm an auditor. If you come to the facility to audit, it don't go through the process of document that is not available. You only audit what is on paper. So, at that time, everyone's not writing, it cannot be audited. Now, we go and follow with the audit. We have the new system set up. At least, if you want an audit to be turned to that particular, uh, entity, we can do that.
Right.
So, I hope we understand that and move over with the budget. Everything go with system in accounting. The way you want it to be broken down, it cannot be like that.
Okay, hey, hey. Okay, that's.
There was statements made about charging the ci- city fifty thousand dollars for you, for facilities for us. I need the board to acknowledge, I need the public to know that that fifty thousand dollars is a negotiated fee. That's not the full fee of what the district is paying to our custodians and, and to our, uh, security staff. So, even if City Hall is giving us fifty thousand dollars, we, the district is still putting out sometimes an extra two hundred fifty to three hundred thousand dollars to pay for, for the custodial, the custodians and the, uh, security for the, like, those city hall programs. So, we are still using district money to pay for their programs, and they're not giving us back. Giving us back the, the, the balance of that, you know, that you negotiated that fifty thousand dollars when they should have, sometimes been giving us over three hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you. Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So, so we have, uh, we have a motion by Mr. Henry and we have a second by Mr. Armstrong to approve the considered agenda. We already had board comment. We're gonna do a roll call vote. Mr. Armstrong. Ms. Crockett. Mr. Wingfield.
Yes, but abstaining for anything dealing with mock their state university or check number.
Uh, Board Vice President Gravesandy.
She's coming.
Uh, President Johnson.
Yeah.
Board Member Tarver.
I'm gonna abstain from H one. I'm gonna abstain.
You said H, H one?
H one, yeah. I'm gonna abstain from J one through J six. I'm gonna abstain from L three.
So, Mr. Tarver, just to be clear, you're gonna abstain from H one, J one through J six and L three, correct? Got it. Uh, Mr. Henry?
Yeah.
Dr. Turner?
Yes, but I won't abstain from anything, yes.
Mr. Sharif? Board Vice President Gravesandy?
Yes, accept anything to your limit, Jeremy Gravesandy.
And once again, Board President Johnson.
Yes.
Madam President, motion carried.
Thank you. Scheduling meetings that are as follows. Orange Board of Educat- Orange Board Ed- of Education Public Budget Meeting, Wednesday, April twenty-fourth at six o'clock P M, held at Orange Board of Education Administration Building, four fifty-one Lincoln Avenue. Public Relations Committee Virtual Meeting, Wednesday, May first, two thousand twenty-four, at four forty-five. Orange Board of Edu- Orange Board of Education Public Board Hearing, Wednesday, May eighth, at seven thirty, held at Orange Public, Orange Board of Education Administrative Building, four fifty-one Lincoln Avenue, Orange, New Jersey. We will recess until four, six forty-five or later than seven thirty. Close meetings. Facilities Committee Virtual Meeting, Monday, April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four, at three thirty. Curriculum Committee Virtual Meeting, Tuesday, April twenty-third, at three thirty P M. Special Education Virtual Meeting, Tuesday, April third, thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, at three thirty. Policy Committee Virtual Meeting, Thursday, May second, two thousand twenty-four, at four P M. Finance Committee Meeting, Thursday, May second, at five thirty P M. Uh, Human Resources Committee Virtual Meeting, Monday, May sixth, two thousand twenty-four, at four thirty P M. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Guys, hold on one second. There's a motion first. Let me just get the.
Motion.
Second you.
If the whole board approves to close, you can.
Okay, so, first and second.
So, we have a, a motion to close the meeting by Dr. Turner. It's been seconded by Board Vice President Gravesandy. Wanna do a roll call vote? Mr. Armstrong. Mr. Sharif. Ms. Crockett. Board President Johnson. Vice President Gravesandy.
Yes.
Mr. Wingfield.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Henry. Mr. Tarver. Madam President, motion carried. Board meeting has been adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.